Lord God, as we get ready to enter into a new year, Lord God, I'm just asking that you would keep every resident safe, Lord God. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing in this season and what you're gonna do in the new year for this city, for the council, and for everyone that's in the city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander?
Present.
Spitali?
Here.
Vines?
Here.
Kelwinski?
Here.
Torres? Torres?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Rakos?
Here.
Warple?
We got eight present and one absent. Mayor's address.
Hi, Mr. President. Good to see you. I hope Councilman Warple's feeling better and to the rest of the council. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and if you're atheist, Happy Tuesday. I wanted to talk about Public Works reorganization, update you, and then update you on the injunction we filed against the Franciscan Alliance, and I should be done in a couple minutes here. Last time I came before you, I talked about the fact that we're doing a Public Works reorganization. We expected when we did the buyout that Public Works would be the most affected department, and we were correct in that. In addition to a number of drivers and mechanics that took the buyout, we had our entire leadership team at Public Works take the buyout. Gary Gleason took the buyout. He was the department head for 40 years. We had Johnny Perez take the buyout. Johnny Perez has been with City Hammond close to three decades. In addition to the number one and number two in the department, we had the third district supervisor, Department of Public Works, Tim Woods, took the buyout. We had fourth district supervisor Clyde Stout, who took the buyout and unfortunately passed away right after he took the buyout. It's a tragedy. We also had the sixth district supervisor Joey Medwitz take the buyout. Since that time, last time I spoke to you, I informed you that Felix Gonzalez is the new department head of Hammond Department of Public Works. We spoke with all the employees. We spoke with the bosses. We spoke with everybody in the department. Based on that and the 20 years' experience I have running the City Hammond, I thought Felix would be the right choice. I think he's the kind of person that could run Public Works for a long time. He's a great leader. He's very level-headed. He's a hard worker. I think he's gonna do a great job. We promoted Rhonda Dowd, who has always been the office manager. She was an office manager extraordinaire. She was also a driver, which is above and beyond the call of duty. Whenever it would snow a lot, Rhonda was kind of, you know, office manager that jumped in a truck and plowed snow. I thought that showed great leadership. She's done a great job. We promoted her to be Felix's assistant. And since the last time we spoke, we've replaced the three supervisors. I wanted to get it done before the blizzard that hit. Tim Woods, as I indicated in the third district, has been replaced by Ryan Woods, who is not related to Tim, but Ryan's been with the City of Hammond for a long time. He's an excellent employee, and I think he's gonna do a great job in the third district. In the fourth district, to replace Clyde Stout, we replaced him with Mike Cano. A lot of you refer, know Mike by the name Peanut. He's been with the City Hammond for, I think, around 15 years. Great worker. He's gonna do a great job in the fourth district. And in the sixth district, we replaced Joey Medwitz with Scott DeAngelo. Scott DeAngelo has been with the City Hammond for a long time, longtime volunteer for EMS. A lot of you may know him by that. He's an excellent employee. He's gonna do a great job. So, we went full steam into, into the blizzard. Gary Gleason's still technically the department head, so Felix is getting good opportunity to work with Gary Gleason under fire. So, just how we wanted it to work. So, as you all know, we filed an injunction against the Franciscan Alliance to keep the ER open in downtown Hammond. I was just gonna read some findings and facts with you all, just so you know how this all went down, if you don't mind. Findings and facts by the judge. It was uncontested that the defendant, that Franciscan Alliance, has been losing money at the downtown Hammond location for several years. It's also uncontested that on May 4th, 2021, with two hours' notice, the plaintiff, that's us, two hours' notice to the plaintiff, the defendant announced that it was making changes at St. Margaret Mercy Hospital. The changes included downsizing the hospital, keeping the ER open, providing a limited number of beds, and a number of other services. Franciscan issued a press release that advised certain changes would take place at the hospital, but that a full-size, a full-service emergency department at the downtown Hammond location would continue to provide 24/7 care downtown. On June 9th, which is one month after the meeting, oh no, one month after we received the notice, June 9th, 2021, I hosted Sister Jane Marie, who's the chairwoman of the Franciscan Alliance, Kevin Leahy, who's the CEO of Franciscan Alliance, Franciscan board member Cal Bellamy. We all know Cal Bellamy, Mr. Hammond, and Pat Maloney, CEO of Franciscan Health Hammond. I hosted them all at my office at this time. And these are uncontested findings by the judge. Everybody agrees on all these facts. The mayor testified that on June 9th, 2021, that meeting, the representatives promised the defendant that St. Margaret's would main, promised the plaintiff that St. Margaret's would maintain a full-service emergency department in downtown Hammond. It was uncontested that on June 9th, 2021 meeting, the mayor was shown a PowerPoint presentation which provided plans to keep the emergency department open with a new entrance. The mayor testified that members of the defendant's leadership team assured him that we will keep accepting patients. This is all going on in June of 2021. It was clear to the court that the mayor relied upon the statements, this has been written by the judge, by the way, "It's clear to the court that the mayor relied upon the statements of the defendant's leadership team and took them as a reaffirmation of the defendant's earlier promise to keep the emergency department open in downtown Hammond." Email, email was sent to me confirming everything that was said in that meeting, and then basically no talk for 18 months. A year later, on November 3rd, 2022, the defendant advised the city that it was closing for Franciscan Health Hammond. Then it followed up shortly thereafter with the email to Hammond Fire Chief. Chief Smith indicated that would not accept ambulances at the downtown Hammond emergency room effective December 23rd, 2022, two days before Christmas. Mayor testified that had been, had he had been aware that the defendant would break its promise, he would have used that time period from May 2021 until November 2022 to find another emergency department provider. Conclusions of law, this is the judge's conclusion, conclusion. On June 9th, 2021, Franciscan Alliance made promises to the mayor, through the mayor, that the emergency department would remain open. The promise regarding the emergency department was reaffirmed in a June 2021 email from the CEO to the mayor, and the mayor relied on these promises made by the defendant to keep the emergency department order, open. Order of the court, the plaintiff's motion for a preliminary injunction was granted. The court hereby enjoins the defendant from closing the emergency department presently operated in downtown Hammond. The emergency department is to remain open, and the defendant is ordered to take all steps necessary to ensure that the facility in downtown Hammond remains legally licensed and operational. The defendant is prohibited until further order of the court from taking steps to diminish or in any way reduce the health care currently provided to patients in the downtown Hammond facility for a period of nine months. I drove by right before I got here, and it's open, well-lit, lots of cars coming in and out. So, the fact that that meeting took place with the leaders of the, of the hospital chain and the promises they made that were relied upon, we, you know, through the legal team invoked something called collateral, promissory estoppel, and we have nine months to find a replacement in downtown Hammond. I'm already in communication with two providers that are interested in meeting with us, and we're gonna do everything we can to, to keep an emergency room in downtown Hammond. But this is good news. It gives us nine months to operate. I don't know if you have any questions. I'm sorry about the long address, but I figured we might as well address this.
Mayor, is that, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is that, if they're tearing down, they can do that kind of stuff?
You know, thank you, Councilman Spitali. The mistake they made was promising us the ER. If they'd never, if they just told us right off the bat, "We're tearing it all down, too bad, Hammond," we couldn't have done anything. I would've had to get to work right then and there to find a replacement. But because they kept on telling us for 18 months, "The ER's gonna remain open, don't worry, we're tearing down the hospital, but the ER's gonna remain open," and then they, using the judge's language, they, you know, reneged on their promises, using the judge's language, they, they lied. They changed their mind. But we're talking, it's not a McDonald's we're talking about. We're talking about an emergency room. 27,000 visits by the Hammond Fire Department for the previous five years. This is not a McDonald's we're talking about. You can't lie about an ER. So what's the motivation? Why would they lie to us? Because they didn't want people. They didn't want a competitor in Hammond. I was told all along, being honest, I said this in court, so I could say it here, I was told all along, the reason St. Margaret's was keeping the presence in downtown Hammond was greedy. They wanted to keep people in the system. So if you get shot, or if you get sick, and you go to that location, they're gonna funnel you to another one of their campuses. So it's good business for them to keep it in downtown Hammond. So, all along, I was like, okay, we got the ER, thank God we got the ER, but I wasn't really thinking it was a kind gesture on their part. I thought it was a greedy gesture. And then for them to turn around and say, "Hey, we changed our mind, we're out," that's an ER. 27,000 runs a day, over the last five years in that location. We go there 10 times a day. So it's a big deal, and...
Does the state pay their money also, too?
A lot of state money. And the problem with this location is, for them, a lot of their customers come from across the border. So I imagine Indiana's probably quick to reimburse an Indiana hospital, but I don't know how quick Illinois is to reimburse an Indiana hospital. And when most of the patients are coming from Illinois, it's a major problem for anybody that's operating on the border. So, you know, I'm not trying to make excuses for Franciscan, but they claim they're losing money, but quite frankly, they have billions in the bank. They're not losing that much money. They could've kept it open. They just didn't want to. Stinks. Councilman Golitsky? I'm sorry, Mr. President? I'm supposed to go through you? I apologize.
No, that's quite okay. Thanks. The two healthcare providers that are interested, are they just interested in the ER?
Yes, sir.
That's all?
Yes, sir.
I see. And so...
There's, and it's interesting, there's interest from the state of Illinois to keep this open, which is interesting. I may have to come back to you all. It's an interesting proposal. 'Cause let's say, I would be interested to see, out of the total number of patients in the old St. Margaret's, how many were actually Hoosiers? I have a feeling 70, 65%? I don't know. Are Illinois residents. So this hospital shutting down has a dramatic effect on state of Illinois, and they weren't represented at all in court. I couldn't even say Illinois without the other side objecting, 'cause I was trying to make the argument for the mayor of Cal City, who wasn't a party in the case, but they wouldn't let me talk about it. I'm sorry if I went on.
Okay, that was good information. The other thing I wanted to ask about was, is their license up at the end of this year?
That's a great question. They kept saying that during the hearing, Councilman, and I believe it is, but we also talked to some healthcare providers that are like, yeah, they could renew it. It's very simple. They've been operating for 100-plus years as an ER. It's not like they're gonna have to go through burdensome inspections. It's an ER, they've been operating for years. So I imagine, because of the court's order, that they're gonna reapply and just keep it open. They're, they're open wide now, and, you know, it's past December 23rd. I don't know, they could still appeal this, by the way. And if they do, you know, we'll go to the Court of Appeals, but in the meantime, they have to keep it open, so...
And they can proceed with demo of the rest of the building?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And they will, by the way. And they will. And, and by the way, when we, next time we have an executive session where I could talk about confidential stuff, I could update you a little bit more on that, but I don't wanna divulge any information publicly that could be stolen from the City of Hammond, so...
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. President? Mayor, what's the significance for the nine months, or was the rationale for extending this time?
Thanks. Good question. We were arguing for a year and a half, Councilman. I wanted everything we can get. And our rationale for a year and a half was that's how long they were lying to us. I hate using language like this when I'm talking about Catholic officials in a Catholic hospital, but I am. They lied to us. And they lied to us for 18 months. So we were seeking very specific, we wanted the ER to stay open under judge's order for 18 months, and the judge compromised, I believe. I don't know, he didn't explain his rationale, but I believe that's probably what happened. We, we won, but we didn't get everything we were asking for. Right?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Mr. President? I don't know if it's confidential or not. Any bidders? Is there a national search, some kind of getting bidders to come out and bid for locating here in Hammond?
We, right now, we're not going through any RFPs. It's not even our land. It's their land, you know? I mean, think about it. We can't really bid property we don't own. We don't own it. It's owned by the Sisters. And being, I believe, they don't wanna see any medical use there, because they're greedy bankers, quite frankly. I hate saying this, but I'm gonna say it. They're like greedy bankers. And if we put another medical facility there, that threatens the Sisters and the Franciscans, and they don't want that. They would rather see houses, or they would rather see, like, they're proposing a group home, something not threatening to the Sisters, 'cause they want to keep all the money for themselves. This is all about money, a non-taxable entity, by the way, that has billions of dollars that doesn't wanna help Hammond residents anymore. It's a financial decision.
It doesn't have to be in that property location. City find another location to attract bidders?
Right. I'll be honest, we have great locations in the city, not in downtown. But right now, this is the piece of property that's available, and obviously, we have powers of eminent domain that we could use for things like hospitals, and we would have to consider that down the road. But we got nine months to breathe, which is great, 'cause the alternative was, we were literally gonna have one ambulance out of the city for hours every day, transporting patients to community, transporting patients to Christ, staying with the patient until they're cleared, and then in the meantime, a gaping hole back in our districts. You know, if we send one of our ambulances from Central to Christ or to Munster, and somebody in this neighborhood has a heart attack, we got no ambulance here, because our ambulance is in Munster, instead of being in downtown Hammond. That's a problem. This is the kind of stuff that we were bringing up to the judge, and the judge was listening, so...
Mr. President, can Franciscan say no to any offers and still just tear it down at the end of nine months?
Yes. But we have powers, too, Councilman. We have powers of eminent domain, and we have to use it for eminent, for public use. And if we had a user of the ER, I would not be hesitant to use those powers. We would be able to do it, for sure. It's a public use. What you do is, the court gives you, in a case like that, the court gives you, so if we said, "Hey, this piece of property, we need it for an ER," the court would give us the piece of property quick, within months, and you would be haggling for years about the price. But they give you the property upfront, and then you argue. Once they say, "Yeah, it's a public use, they're gonna put a ER there," they give you the property quick, and then the valuation is determined in litigation.
Can the buildings remain up, or would it get torn down?
The hospital?
The ER?
Uh, good, these are questions we're gonna have to evaluate. Maybe somebody, if somebody wants that piece of property, and maybe somebody wants to build something new, Councilman, who knows? You know? It's a big footprint, by the way. We could keep this one operating, and maybe build another ER and another part of the footprint, you know? Yeah. We got a lot of work to do. Nine months. A lot of work in nine months. But it would've been better if we got the 18, but it's better than the alternative. So sometimes the best deals are struck where everybody walks away a little unhappy. But in this case, we weren't exactly unhappy, and the Sisters, they were very unhappy. They lost. And it's gonna cost them millions to keep it open for nine more months.
Appreciate you fighting for us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate the support of the council a lot. You guys always got my back, and I got your back, too. And I think the residents, you know, but we do have work to do. This isn't, we can't high-five too long, so... But I appreciate you all very much. Merry Christmas. Nice to see you all. Happy Hanukkah. Happy holidays. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Mr. President? Mayor, is there anything else we can do as a council to support you all in this endeavor?
Yeah. I mean, when the time comes, we're gonna be talking, Councilman. You're gonna be part and parcel, I promise. 'Cause there's an interesting proposal coming from across the border, and it involves government money from another state. It's interesting. I mean, it's handy that this is right on the state line, so I'm gonna be coming back to talk to you, I promise, okay? And I can't really talk about too much more on public record, so...
Mr. President?
Mr. President? I'm sorry.
Mayor, I know that you're working really hard with that, and it's definitely deeply a concern, because we know that since that, that conversation has even happened with the hospitals, the other hospitals are being overflowed.
Yes.
And seeing that we're a larger city, I think it'll be a great idea, whatever we can do to figure out how to get another hospital or something in our city to protect our residents, because we know that we have a fight on our hands. And public safety and health is definitely a concern of, I believe, all of ours, outside of the trains and things like that. It's trying to make sure that we can get our residents quick into the thing, and so if that hospital closes, we know that there's a bigger issue going to happen, and we might lose some residents in this process.
You're right. Absolutely right, Councilwoman. I appreciate it, and I agree with you.
Mr. President? Mayor, does anything have any effect on the big hospital to put in Crown Point?
Yeah. Has a lot to do with it. Every time I drive by it, I curse. Every time. And I drove by it a lot when I was running for Senate. I mean, it's everything to do with it. And if you look at the Franciscan's business model, this is what they do. They move out of cities like Hammond, and they move to places like Crown Point. That's what they do. They're dedicated to helping the poor. That's their mission. They just don't follow the mission. So they did it in Chicago Heights. They moved from Chicago Heights to Olympia Fields. Now they're moving from Hammond to Crown Point. And, you know, they have a big, beautiful, you know, hospital right off the highway in Michigan City. It's rotten. It's really rotten. I hate it. It shakes me in my foundation, 'cause it's not going in court and testifying and talking about how a sister lied to you, and the CEO of a Catholic hospital lied straight to my face. I mean, they did. So...
Thank you for what you've been doing.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. President? I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor. Having had some experience at the ER recently over at Community, it is jam-packed.
Yes, ma'am.
And they are understaffed. They do not have enough space over there to accommodate all the patients that are coming that would have gone to St. Margaret's. Somebody's gonna die.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what's, that is what is going to happen, because there just isn't enough service. So thank you on behalf of the residents of the City of Hammond, even those, you know, who cross over the state line. Healthcare is very important, and, and I just appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. Before I let go, I wanna recognize our attorneys that were litigating this case for us. First off, Mike Tolbert from Tolbert &amp; Tolbert, awesome. And he had an associate with him, or I'm not sure if she was an associate or a partner, and I don't recall her name, but they did awesome work. Mike was the main litigator, talked, he opened, and I believe he closed as well. Corporate counsel Kevin Smith, this was his idea. It was his idea to use promissory estoppel. It was, it's perfect. This is the kind of case that law students are gonna read about. It's perfect for promissory estoppel. I almost, when I testified and I got done, I was like, I don't know how the judge isn't gonna side with us. Kevin Smith, Dave Wesson, who represents the Redevelopment Commission, was also representing us on this. They did an amazing job. And we were up against the big, you know, big law firms, so we did a good job. And Janet, you and Councilwoman Katrina made the same point about the other hospitals being totally overcrowded. Fact. And we were silently being cheered on by CEOs of the other hospital chains that are devastated right now, once Franciscan stopped taking ambulances. We had to take them to Community, and Community's overrun right now. So I appreciate you guys' assistance on this, 'cause without you having my back, my job would be so much harder. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Merry Christmas. I'll see you next meeting.
Okay, next up, approval of minutes?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali?
Motion to accept a minute through December 12, 2022, and be placed on file?
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, on the agenda, claims, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
I, yes, I ask for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated December 19th of '22, and ending with claims dated December 20th of '22. Claim number 7391 through claim number 7698 inclusive, in the amount of $8,618,656.80. I still move.
Second. Motion to second, approve the claims. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple.
Passes a 0-1 absent. Next up, nope, there are no public hearings today. Any communications? Any communications?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander?
As we get ready to enter the holiday, just wanna remind residents to not shoot your guns up in the air at midnight. We don't want any casualties or any other issues that happen with bullets coming back down. We know that it's a celebratory time, but this is one of those times that we wanna be cautious. So Happy New Year to everyone. Also, if you attended the holiday treats giveaway, please check your email. There was a special email sent out to you for another event for you. Other than that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Here and now, next up, committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2255, 2256, and 2257. Mr. President? Yes, I wanted to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. We have one in January. Hessville Crime Watch will meet January 19th at the Gene Shepherd Center at 6:00 PM. As usual, if you see anything that just does not feel right, do not hesitate to call 911, because Community is not just about me, it's about us. Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes, Capital Improvements Board. The Capital Improvements Board met on December 19th. We approved funding for Chicago Street Phase 2, change order number 1 through 5, in the amount of $5,092.74. to call 911, because Community is not just about me. It's about us. Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, Capital Improvements Board. The Capital Improvements Board met on December 19th. We approved funding for Chicago Street Phase Two, change order number one through five, in the amount of $5,092.74. We also approved $14,032.69 for J.F. Mahoney Drive reconstruction supplemental construction through Milestone Contractors North, Inc. We also approved $152,600 for J.F. Mahoney Drive reconstruction, construction engineering through NICE Engineering. We also approved $350,000 for the Hammond, that's Hammond's contribution to the Energy Savings Program Phase Three with the Leopardo Group. We also approved $361,160.60 for the Summer Street Reconstruction. The constructionering engineering company is American Structure Point. The next meeting will be Tuesday, January 3rd. The work-study session will be at 5:30 PM, and the meeting will be at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? ordinance, third and final passage.
2255, an ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the city of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1st, 2023.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2255.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. As is done every year at this time, this approves the pay raises for the mayor, council people, and clerk.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple.
Measure passes eight zero one absent.
Righty.
Next up, 2256.
2256, an ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2022 budgets.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2256.
Second. Motion is second for 2256. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this moves savings that was realized from streetlights, capital outlight for fires, seed at utilities, CCD vehicles from the '21 to '22 budget in the energy savings line item to be used for the bonds and lease payment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple.
Passes eight, present, eight, eight yes, zero, zero against, and one absent.
2257, an ordinance to amend and replace flood hazard area ordinance 9344 by establishing provisions for flood damage prevention in accordance with the State of Indiana Model Ordinance for Flood Damage Protection.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 2257?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
This is an ordinance update and amend for the existing flood plain ordinance. Also, too, this is presented by us, by the state, and this is not going to affect anybody's flood insurance or any other areas that have already been removed from the flood plain area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple.
Motion passes, ordinance passes eight zero one absent. And that concludes the third and final, correct?
Correct.
Item 10, introduction of ordinances.
2258, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 2512 New York Avenue.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that ordinance 22-58 passes through first and second reading. We refer the council as a whole on 1/9/23 at 5:15 PM.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just briefly, this is land that redevelopment owns, that they are petitioning for this change in zoning from commercial to institutional, so that kind of college can put up a field for a practice or football, soccer, et cetera, next to their dorm, and to lease that property there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Calwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple.
Motion passes eight zero one absent. Okay, that should, that's, introduction of ordinances, that concludes that. Any resolutions? I show nothing. We have none. No unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Kowinski.
Motion to reappoint Melissa Farrell to the Gaming Advisory Board for 2023.
Second.
Okay. I have a question on that. We have, we have everybody, I think we can do all five of them at the same time. Let's do all.
Whatever you think. It's whatever's your budget.
For the Gaming Advisory Board. Um, give me a second.
I don't have the names.
Thank you.
Mr. President, are they all reappointments?
Yes.
What's that?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we'll do the one that isn't separate.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to amend that proposal and make order to reappoint the following people to the Gaming Advisory Board. Katrina Alexander, Janet Vines, Melissa Farrell.
And I'll second that again.
So, you want a motion is second for the nominations as listed? Any discussion? Any discussion? These are reappointments, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
This is.
What area you want me to?
Let's do the remainder of the appointments.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to appoint, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Garrick Alexander to the Mayor's Gaming Advisory Board, or Committee, sorry.
Second.
So, a motion is second for Garrick Alexander for the Advisory Board. This is not a reappointment.
Correct.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
You want to do the appointment of the three councils? Do that, the word as well?
Already did.
We already did.
Already? You already listened?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Warple to the Capital Improvements Committee.
Second. Individually?
Well, the other two are reappointments.
Okay. So, we have a motion to appoint David Warple to the Capital Improvements. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, then I would like to make a motion to reappoint Barry Tyler and Dan Spitali to the Capital Improvements Board.
Go ahead, here a second.
Second.
Motion is second to reappoint.
Barry Tyler, Dan Spitali.
Dan Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
So, do we have any other appointments that we need to get done? No unfinished business? Or no unfinished business? One announcement I'd like to make, Mayor's Night Out is January 4th, Gene Shepherd Center at 6:30. It's for the 6th District, January 4th, Gene Shepherd Center, Mayor's Night Out, be in the, at the Gene Shepherd Center. Any other, no unfinished business? No unfinished business? Any other no unfinished business? Turned on? Public expression. George Stoy.
How fast?
Ken Rosa.
Greetings, council. Merry Christmas to y'all.
Merry Christmas.
Um, the city needs to stop pursuing this inferior bridge option in Hessville that will not service the needs in our community, and proceed with an underpass which will meet the needs of all residents, including our most vulnerable, children, elderly, and handicapped. There are two solutions to our train problem. One is superior, and one is far inferior. All residents will benefit from an underpass. As admitted by the mayor and the city engineer, the bridge was designed for drivers. It was not designed to service children walking to and from school. The mayor conceded the bridge location will mean kids have to walk two miles. How many 13-year-olds do you know have a driver's license? Public safety is ignored by locating the bridge a mile from where the city told indot was the most hazardous location and the purpose of the project. Quote, "Residents of all ages complain about the line and the inability to cross due to the standing trains. Witnesses have seen parents tell their children to climb through the standing trains in order for the child to make it to school on time," unquote. That spot is Grand Avenue Crossing, where all three schools are located, not on Parish Avenue. What will we say when kids get crushed to death by trying to cross the tracks? If you want to hear stories of near-death experiences that happens every time a kid resorts to climb over or under a standing train at that location, Grand Avenue, I ask the mayor to reconsider this terrible project and proceed with one that services the whole community, an underpass. The bridge will prove to be inadequate and an eyesore compared to the rolling hills of the 4,000-year-old Dune Woodlands it will demolish. This will be what the mayor is remembered for. This will become his legacy. All progress made over the years will be overshadowed by dysfunctional albatross down the tracks and out of reach for kids trying to cross on Grand Avenue. I am glad the city's common council has allocated funds to solve our train issue, but this is good money going after bad. You need to repeal the ordinances which gives money to this boondoggle waiting to happen, and redistribute the $3.6 million in ARP funds and the $400,000 of city money to a fully functional solution, an underpass. There is plenty of federal money out there to solve the problem properly. $8.8 billion has been awarded to the state of Indiana in the infrastructure bill. Put a proposal together and go get it. Give us something to be proud of, a public works project that services the needs of all the residents and our community. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Your second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?